Okay, let's call the meeting to order. It's Monday, April 25th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. I'd like to welcome Kristy. I hope your time with us is enjoyable, educational, and fulfilling.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here.
Thank you. Okay, roll call. Elvin. Elsa.
Brooks.
Brooks.
Butler.
Huska.
Elsa present. We've got Brad. And Tammy. And of course Ellen. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll motion to approve the agenda.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
Opposed?
I oppose.
You oppose?
Yep.
Okay.
I oppose.
You oppose?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so we've got one for... Got one approval. So we're not going to approve the agenda?
No, I think we need to hold off on doing the Heather evaluation. Until we get through with our bylaws.
Okay. So you want to hold off, not do the evaluation tonight?
You just want to table it?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so we're going to table the evali... Do you have a vote on that?
And make a motion to table the Heather evaluation.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I oppose. Okay. Public audience, three minutes.
My name is Erin Huska, and I'd like to address the board members. And there's been some recent rumblings due to Scott being so generous in providing his time and videotaping these meetings as it's been commented to me and others within the community that there's nepotism and people being talked down to, both in the audience, other board members, and to people of the library that are staff members. And it's very disheartening to hear that coming across from someone who is in a leadership position of people being talked down to. I guess in a leadership position, that kind of attitude towards others is disheartening. And it'd be nice to see everything be fair to everyone, both on the board and within the library, staff, and others of our community, instead of the constant backstabbing that seems to go on in this town, not just on this board, but a lot of other boards in town as well.
Anyone else? Nothing further? Tammy, would you like that? You've got nothing tonight?
No.
Okay. Um, I've got one thing that I want to ask if I could, Tammy. Um, the... This came out with a water bill. It's the... It's the schedule, I think, of Matt's stuff.
Oh, yeah.
What does this cost? Have the city put this in with the water bill?
It's just that it's on the back of the water bill. There's no additional cost because it's the same mail.
Okay, so if we wanted to do this, it wouldn't cost us anything, the library?
No, I mean, you'd have to supply your own paper and run through the folding and that, but no.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I think Bree sent Ellen an email asking if there's anything she wants to put on. She does.
Okay.
But we make it... She says she doesn't get a response, but I feel that we have a calendar. We do it. We have more than she can put on.
Well, I know sometimes it's on the back of the water bill, but this was a totally separate sheet.
Yeah, they'll be doing that throughout the summer with all the parking wreck events going on.
Okay. So we could just do it, okay? Thank you. Brad?
Hello, anything tonight?
Thanks, Brad.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Library minutes. Uh, March 28th, 2022. Has everybody read them?
Yes.
And I have a motion.
I'll take a motion to approve the minutes.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, city financial. Did everybody get a chance to look it over? Any questions?
No. No.
I've got a couple. Um... Up in March, the very first line missing on these charges. Uh, when I matched it up with our records that we approved, there should be $108 there. I talked to Ronnie about it. She found it. Everything else was there except for the $108 she found it. So that will be fixed on the next financial, right? You have to do that one, right, Tammy?
Yes, the general... General has already been done, but yeah, it's not on this financial report.
So it will be added in April. Um, also, here's... You want to pass that down to Ellen? We had not gotten a bill for the insurance that was on here, and so I asked the city if they would please provide us with the bill, so we have the bill for that that was down in, about halfway down on expenditures, $800, so we now have a bill for that. I think those were the only two things that I had. Second, give a motion?
I may make a motion to approve the city financials.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Monthly bills. So transaction detail. Did y'all get a chance to look it over?
Yeah.
I think we filled them. Any questions? I just had... Well, we've got two things I have. Number one, under, um... I think it was under materials. All right, materials. There was a... The 1604 for Amazon. That's... Is that for the prime?
Yeah.
We've been running that under contracts. So it needs to come out of that, so that amount, um, less the 1604 should be 60... Excuse me, 664.62. And then if you add it into the contracts, that makes, uh, the contracts $1,128. So our total for the month, oh, one more thing to correct for that, is Ellen dropped this bill for, um, Jekoff. It has to do with the fire. And I called Tammy because I wasn't sure how that needed to be addressed either. And so I talked to her, and she said... Help me out if I get this right, Tammy, or get it wrong. Did we get a adjuster's report from the city adjuster or from ICAP?
No, I haven't.
Okay, so...
They did say they're mailing out a check, though. They said they went ahead and got what they needed, and they're good.
So have they got this bill?
No, he said he just did a quick estimate, but we don't need the light things. Our electrician, our electricity's all good, so I don't know what he gave us for that.
Well...
I don't know what he's given. I have no idea after he's talked.
This isn't for the light that needs replaced. This is just checking the electricity, is that correct?
Yeah, but they had not checked the light above the door. That's what that was. The reflectors, it was fine.
Okay, so this is just checking that light again. Okay, so that should then be part of it?
Yeah.
Okay, because I remember the adjuster talking about that, so we should be good on that, so, okay.
So did I understand that, Tammy?
Um, no, I think we need to... Help me out, Tammy, but I think we need a pink slip on this filled out, and we'll add that to our bills. We'll pay it because the check will come to the city and everything would pay it out of that check. Right?
Yes, and I would hope that they would send the adjusters a report with the check, that we would get something showing what all their claims are.
Yeah, and Ellen, we need a pink slip, so Ellen will have to get that for you. Okay, so if we add that 97.50 to our total, our total bills for the month will be $6,118.20. That's the amount we'll have to approve. Say that one more time, 6,118.20. 6,118.20, if my math is right. I... Okay. So can we get an approval for that?
Make a motion to approve the $6,118.20, is that right?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Um, Ellen, could we get a total on... Right, in circulation? Um, uh-huh. Um, a total on what the generator cost us with everything.
Okay.
So we know what that ended up... Because I... I don't think I've got... I don't think we've got that total anywhere. We've got bits and pieces here and there, but I don't... I don't think we've got a good handle on that. So if you could provide that, I appreciate it. Okay, library statistics. Everybody have those over? Anybody have any questions? Have you guys got any questions?
Nope.
Ellen, did you find out why this bottom grab is so screwed up?
She's never ever...
She's never responded?
Like, it's getting different every month, though. It's full, it's not full.
Well, it's still, it's like, you know, a full at eight, nine, 10 o'clock in the morning and you're not even open. It's... It's full, unless I'm just not reading it right. But it just doesn't make any sense.
Well, we have computers in there that's just on Wi-Fi that don't have, like, in the adult room. That stuff is just on Wi-Fi. Any phone that's near, it's Wi-Fi.
Yeah.
No, it's anything.
Do you think that makes sense?
Yeah.
Um, I don't know.
Zero to two, I don't know. It just... It just doesn't look right. I don't know even how far our Wi-Fi reaches either. Because that could be... They could be reaching it over here, over there. It doesn't reach the community center because I checked it Saturday. But it could reach any of those places.
I mean, it's just, it seems... I think I'm just not reading it right. This here.
Is the Wi-Fi password protected to get it all delivered? So is the Wi-Fi password protected in order to get on at the one...
No.
No?
Okay, so it might be...
Yeah.
Doesn't this look... But it doesn't... The variation in it is just weird.
They think there would be more in the...
Yeah, I mean, these are.
Do we know what words on standby at the library? What would be writing on standby using the...
Um... Here's...
Is the generator hooked up to Mobile Link? I don't know. Or Wi-Fi monitors? Yeah, yeah, it is. Yeah. That can be feeding into that as well.
I don't know. We'll just have to watch it, I guess. It just...
It makes it look like we're busy.
Well, it makes it that they're... I mean, there's...
I know.
No, very... The variation is weird. I don't know. Maybe I'm 100% that it's not there. I don't know. Okay. So nobody else got anything on that statistic?
No.
Um, can I have a motion?
I motion to approve the library statistics or...
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Director's report. Anybody have any questions? Any questions?
Ellen, on the Southeast Oak tickets for the kids that come in? Yeah. How do they get these tickets from their library? Um, by one of the... Like they do at your school. You do that, too? Yeah, well, I'm like... Okay, good deal. I didn't know that was tied in. Oh, yeah. So the students can have some incentive to work towards. John, what do you want this on there?
What?
Of the demo.
Yeah, that was question two. I wasn't... What did I do with it? I wrote down, and Tammy, you'd have to tell us, but I just wrote down at the bottom my transaction date. All that fire damage stuff's got to...
Take it under other cap. Take it under other cap, because then that way we separate. So then we can put all of the fire replacement bills there, and you'll see if that matches up with the check you get.
Okay.
If that makes sense to y'all.
Yeah, because it just seemed like it needs to have its own category.
So the 4010, 6799.
Forty...
6727? 679999, okay. Special projects, isn't it? Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. 6727.
Okay. Thank you. Um... I had a question, Ellen, on the, um... You sent us out a email or something on... For the city park, not the city park, I'm sorry, Thomas Mitchell Park, some things that you were wondering if we could have made to put the storytime...
Yeah.
...stuff on. And I had a couple of questions. How are the other parks displaying them? What are they using?
They're all different, but most parks have like a little four-inch, uh, board, you know, four-inch, four-by-four, and then they have like a slate that actually looks like that, but it's short. Most... That's what most look like.
Podium.
Sort of like, yeah.
That's a podium.
Podium. Shirt like that, and, uh, summer straight, summer slant like that.
And the libraries are putting those in?
I don't know who's putting them in.
See, my question...
Southeast Oak only did, or Southeast Oak, um, the... Quok County Conservation, they only give us those little, the boards with the little frill, water things that they can ground the break. That's all they donate, and that doesn't last.
Well, I just, I had a question if we could even do something like that, because if it's libraries money, I'm not sure we can put something permanent, like at the park. I don't know that that, that we could do that. You follow me?
Yeah.
I mean, we had that conversation with...
I'll have to call up the libraries and see if they do it, how they do it.
Yeah, it seems to me that Mary Ann told us that we... Does anybody else recall this conversation?
I just get some more information before you make any decisions. On the library. Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay, so... Make a motion to approve the, file the director's report?
I make a motion to approve the file of the director's report. Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Financial reports.
All in...
Okay. The, um... To move on to unfinished business? Oh, this would be accepted by... Make a motion to accept and file that. Financial report information, please.
Make a motion to accept and file financial report. I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Unfinished business, bylaws.
Passed out of the bird bylaws that I went over. If you just interrupt her, feel free to add to them.
Yes. Should we cut that? I tried on the one... I tried to highlight what I could tell. We had changed it. I don't know if I got it all right or not. Um, I just tried to look at what we had and what looked like changes had been made. So if I didn't get it right, I apologize. I... Can you tell?
One under officers in committee, I have section D.
Section D?
Section D.
Section D, yeah. Oh, it should have been highlighted there. I'm sorry. Everybody get that? Under officers in committee, section D, that was, um, something he added.
Add more members, but only so you can second your term, or one that can serve again on the board. Trustees have to be involved in one year. That just gives a chance to get some fresh people on the board and different ideas.
So let's break in.
Boom. Change about, uh... Her major functions, category A, but, um... Higher evaluation due at the end of November each year. That way we can evaluate the director on the, on the, on the year or four that she's done. At least have a timeframe on the one that wants to, and then we can discuss it for the following years now, should it be issued.
So those are the three sections, uh, number two, D, number three, D, and number four, A. Those were the three areas that you changed it?
Yes.
Okay. Um... I'm not sure where you got this, but this is an old one. It wasn't current.
It's the one that I've sent.
Where did you get it?
It's the one that, um, you sent me.
I didn't send you one.
It's the one that I got from Ellen, from Ellen that, that you, that she got from you.
Yeah, is that one you revised last year or something?
Okay.
Does it say it was revised for 2021?
Just one second. Aye. Um...
Because this one that you handed out, I've seen nothing else from.
Well, we've made some of these changes since I think you were on the board.
I've been on the board since the Jane America.
So these don't match up, so we probably need to go back to the board and look at what happened when you put them together. Well, we changed the... Look, we changed the meeting date to the last night of the month. Oh, shit. Um... And we've moved that on the board meeting. Am I mistaken?
This one appears as 4/22, and this one appears as 4/1, 6/21, 8/21, 2/22, 5/23. So this one has to be the older one, and this one is the newer one. Maybe you could send her the new one, even.
Yeah, I know. I mean, I know that we've changed a number of things from this one. a number of things from this one.
I'm confused on the dates. I have put those up there.
Those, those are the dates when things have been revised or changed.
So made of twenty twenty two.
If, if we prove it, it will be made of twenty twenty two. We have not approved it yet. That date is only on there for the, for when we approve it.
Okay. So will there be... We need to, we need to go back over this and have two readings before it'll be approved?
No, we don't have to have two readings, but we do need to... Look, we're, we're starting with, we're not starting with the same base. We have to start with the same thing. We, we approved changing the dates and our readings to the last night of the month. One, two months ago? I'm not sure if we've been over minutes, but I wrote the table it, go back to the drawing board, and we send it back out to everybody.
Okay.
And then we can approve it on the next one. Think about the evaluation bylaws working fine, so we're trying to make sure.
Yeah.
Well, we, we need to know which one we're gonna go off of.
But this one I know is old, because I know that we've approved stuff.
Because from what I was, what I was sent, this was the newest one that I was sent.
Well, Ellen and I will get together and see if we can't get.
Aren't they actually a library?
They are, it's on, it's on the, it's on the Mitchellville Library website.
But have been that, but have they, the question is, have they been updated as we make the changes?
I don't, I don't know if that's been updated, I can only go off on what was updated to me.
And if they haven't, if, if updates haven't been happening, then we're back to square one. We're back to square one. But we can just start here, so looking good. So we're gonna have, we're gonna have to table this till we've all got... We'll have to go back and...
Well, once we get the most current one that's updated, then we can go off of that one and move forward.
Yes. Okay, so should we have a motion to table this?
I make a motion to table this bylaws change. I second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Ellen, maybe we could try and get together and figure out where we're supposed to be on this? Okay. Community survey. I don't know if changes have been made since I set it out, I... I, I honestly don't. We gotta cut it half. We're down?
If you could go down ways.
Yes, yeah. Maybe eliminate too many, all the, so many, too many choices, and then just put other. Anything that anybody has sent me for changes for it, I have made on this.
I have a question about this mission. What, what are the different ways this can be submitted?
We haven't decided that for sure. We're talking about, we've talked about, um, paper. Electronically, Tammy said they could put it on their website, but I'm sure we could probably put it on our website. I, I think any way that we can get it out there, that's what we need to do. I mean, we're doing the survey because it was requested that we do one.
A fresh eyes is good, if you want to go through it.
That's right. Like, we just keep changing things, we try and...
We have seventy, and we whittled it down to forty five, but... Joan, can I ask who, who, who asked to do that? Because the state library says we did one, the working ones says we did one in two thousand nineteen, and we have to do one in two thousand twenty four for our next strategic plan. So it was requested.
It was requested at a board meeting by members of the community.
It was requested, or it is a part of, part of the evaluation before.
But that's what they wanted it for.
But since we're not gonna use a part of the evaluation, why, why are we doing a survey now?
I still think it's a good thing to reach out to the community as a whole, and how many years has it been?
But then Haskam on that part is some of that.
Did she send you a copy of it?
That's it. Yeah, but, yeah.
I mean, you can make the changes too.
Well, that would be great.
I, I, I asked you, anybody to give us changes to fresh pair of eyes. Anybody that's got suggestions, we've asked for. Anything that you don't think, just draw a line through and...
No, do you know, um, what is, what do you anticipate that costs and what is?
Not until we know how we're gonna distribute that, I guess. Just mainly for improvements, um, compliments, I mean...
I mean, you know.
And maybe it will even bring in some more customers. Just knowing that it's all there. Yeah, I think the cost of it is mainly gonna be the printing. And if we get more than done electronically, that would be cut. So... The hope is to learn a little bit more about the people that we serve. So do we need to look it over some more, or is it something we wanna... Okay, so we're gonna table that? Okay. Make a motion to table it?
Make a motion to table the community library survey.
I second that. I second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, um, I guess the next step then is... What do you want the next step to be? Do you want to all go over it and look at it and let me know if other changes, and we'll try and revise it again?
Yep.
What is the next step? What do you want to do?
I want everybody to look at it?
Yeah.
Give us more...
This is the first I've seen of the revised copy.
I didn't send, I thought I sent it to everybody.
No.
Not the, not the revised, we just chopped that. She was chopping, I was chopping, I apologize.
Yeah, no, this is the first I've seen of this.
I just keep, keep changing it and changing it, and it's like, uh, okay. And I'll issue an email if you've got it, something to make it simple. We're trying, we're trying to... We're trying. Okay, so we table that. Okay, can of bottle collection.
We, we need to find a place to put them, because they gotta come out of the garage.
Okay, we got, we got a little bit of a sticky issue here. We're not finding volunteers, it sounds, to help, so like, the people that were wondering about canceled bottles are not volunteering to help that.
Randy volunteered a few times, for a few hours.
Yeah.
Okay. I had Cory over there one day. It's a lot.
It is, it's a big job. Okay, then, um... It's a volunteer job. Nobody gets paid to do it. And I guess we've been... You've been putting them on your paycheck, on your time sheet?
Yeah, I'm not going for nothing, as a director, I'm not doing that for nothing.
Um, and nobody's asking that you do, but we can't, we've got to find volunteers. We can't pay somebody to do it, and let me explain why. In overtime hours since March twenty sixth, I ran some numbers. And it has cost us six hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-two cents in payroll. And if we add storage facility, which is a hundred dollars a month, the bottle income in that time has been six hundred and six dollars and seventy cents, so we lost without renting a storage facility or anything else, we lost thirty-six dollars in the last month and a half of bottled cans. We have not made a penny.
But you haven't paid me out overtime, that goes in my comp time, or a day off.
It goes in comp time, but that's, that's, that's money.
Yeah, it's a day off I get paid for, I mean...
But it's, that's a day off, we're not working, it's...
It's a question on the comp time.
Okay. Let me explain something else here. I think the main thing is, if we're not making the profit like we were, maybe we should just forget it. It's costing us money. Yeah, and in the long run, if you continue like this, it's gonna do nothing but... The idea is to make money, and it's costing us money. We're not making any money now.
But I remember during pumpkin bill days, we'd take seventy dollars, we'd have to spend that like a month out.
We, we did it for a very short period for two people because we didn't have anybody, but it was very short term. That's... And then all those cans and bottles went back to the library for cash, right? Joan?
The one I'm doing?
No. The pumpkin bill ones, all those cans and bottles that were out there at pumpkin bill went back into the donation for the library, when you had pumpkin bill.
Yeah, yeah, but that's irrelevant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Give me a second here, I gotta find some...
Well, the Lions Club actually called and they, uh, they apologized for not knowing that they had them there, and they said that they were gonna start helping do them, because that was something they were supposed to be doing.
The Mitchellville Handbook reads... "The normal work week for the library director is forty hours per week with no overtime or compensatory time allowed without prior authorization by the board of trustees."
By law, overtime has to be paid out whether it's approved or not, so you're, you're not even compliant.
Excuse me. In the city handbook, it says, "Unless it's an emergency, all overtime shall be approved in advance by the employees, department head, by the city administrator." Um, and it says, "Comp time accrued, instead of paying overtime, should be accrued at the rate of one and a half times for each overtime hour work. Comp time is paid at regular rate." So, folks, how do we address this? Any ideas?
Bylaws, or, you can't supersede state or federal law in regard to payroll.
It just says, I'll read it again. "The normal work week for the library director is forty hours per week with no overtime or comp time allowed without prior authorization by the board of trustees." So we're aware that the cans and the bottles are having to be done by Ellen, and she's getting paid for it, and we know that we're not making nothing. So that's the question, do we want to continue doing this?
Hold on, I apologize, I thought the question was how, about approving the overtime that'd be paid.
It's both.
That's already been, the client's one has to be paid.
Right, it'd be paid, but it doesn't, we, we need to, we'll be responsible for that.
Scott. I, I was just curious on how do you get it approved in advance when it's an emergency? To, my understanding, you'd have to get a phone, you'd have to request it within live time and not wait until the next meeting, so that's why I'm confused, but thank you for giving me some time.
Have a plan for the week ahead, you know, you're gonna have, you don't have volunteers, and you know that you're gonna have to have some overtime, so just, you know, throw it out there.
And you've got the overtime, you're losing money.
We're losing money on it. Yeah. We're doing all the work and...
And we're losing money.
Yeah. So it's something to think about.
What are, what are the options?
Stop doing it. As far as we're doing it, where we are, it's losing money.
Right, I totally understand that, but what would be the options in that case?
Have someone house it, have someone volunteer, I mean, that's where it was before, for years. So, and then they came out and picked it up, they made it really easy. Wasn't always easy, but it got in the years, the years went by. Or offer it to another organization. Yeah, organization in town that can...
Animal.
Yes. Suggestions, folks? I tried to get the school kids involved, and they're just not interested.
Cancer dirty.
Yes.
If you absolutely don't want to continue it, I'll tell you. Popping the tops off, boy, as much as a can, that's a lot cleanup, and you can scrap it for as much as you can, and someone can still make money on that can, if you wanted to do that.
You need people to do it.
Be better than a dirty can.
It's an idea, checking it out. So...
So where's, are we gonna make a plan going forward on this, or what?
I'm looking for suggestions.
Ellen, what are you comfortable with?
Because it's... Well, the light, we make a lot of money on that, that's a good, that's a good thing, um, and the light's gonna help out now. So I think we should give it a shot. We just need to fix a boom. I mean, I'll come back and forth every, all the way to them.
Well, some of them have volunteers to help. They're flying all over town.
I know, I have to call the lines and find out.
So going forward, what can we do to eliminate this issue of having hours worked for overtime that are not being approved? Are we gonna get something where we're gonna allow some of the overtimes per, some of the overtime hours per paper?
We lose money.
We still gotta pay her for the hours that she worked.
Right, those are, those are being paid for. We can't keep losing money every month, though. Yeah. And that's just including the hours that, I don't know that I've got all the hours, we may have lost more money than that. I don't know. A place to house, and then have someone oversee it. You know? Anybody have a big barn that does have nothing in it? I'll throw it out there for suggestions.
How often do they come to pick up the cans?
They take them now, they don't...
I take them in, I can't count sixty, sixty bags plus. Pella, Pella used to come to Jones and get them, they shed sixty bags plus, but I don't have that spot for that.
So do they get redeemed for the whole five cents?
We actually, down at Pella, they treated us as a fundraiser, they do fundraiser different than they do the general public, and so we're gonna make more. But I'm not sure how you're getting that done now.
They just take it out of the K B redemption, and they give us whatever they give us for it. whatever they give us for like twenty-five bags that you'd spend fifty-five for.
So are they doing it by the bag or by the can?
By, by the way to the bag.
By the way to the bag.
So, table it, and then next month, look at everything again and see if anyone can come up with any ideas, where the house and...
I talked to Curtis, and he said that we could use the co-op in June.
Just the month of June?
Well, from June...
Probably through November, once they get the seed out of there.
Yeah, mhm. Yeah. He said that all, uh, he said we could probably move in there in June and have it till next probably February or March. That's the only time that they really...
We, we had to have them out, I think, before that.
Maybe it's January. I don't know. When they start getting the seed in, you know.
Just a research.
It's usually November or December, I thought. It used to be November or December, I thought, but that may have changed.
I can talk to him again.
So who wants to, who's gonna follow up on this? Who's gonna come up with some answers for us?
Were the top cans at the library previously to this?
No, they were stored out at my farm.
Yes, they were.
They were, and so did they come to your farm to...
Pick them up.
Did, did you allow any of the cut for yourself to...
No.
Or labor?
No.
But now they've changed the rules. Now they, they want sixty bags instead of what before was only what, maybe thirty, something like that?
Probably because of gas prices. No. They didn't change anything. They took everything that they could fit.
Yeah.
And so we would always, when, other company that we had before didn't have as big of a trailer.
Yeah.
And so they didn't take as many when they came to pick up, 'cause they didn't have a, they didn't have the, the...
The space for it.
The space to haul them. They didn't have this, the equipment to haul this much.
Yeah.
So when Pella started doing it, they had a bigger trailer and they could haul more at one time. And then they started bringing the Gaylords. We used to put the glass in cardboard boxes.
Yeah.
And for Pella, it was a lot easier to put it in the Gaylords. It's a lot easier to move them around. And so they started supplying the Gaylords and with all, so all the glass went in the Gaylords, which was really
Yeah.
a, a savings. It, it really helped with the sorting and moving and all of that. So that was, that was a big plus when they did that.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll table that. So we can table it. Let's have a motion to table it, but we need to have a committee to figure out how to do what...
I'll try and work something out.
Okay.
Can we talk to some people in the community who can come up with?
Yeah.
So Jerry and Marguerite? Who else wants to work on that? Anyone else? Can I have a motion to table it then? Tell me.
I made a motion to table the bottles and cans. A second then.
Oh, favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay. I guess we're on the website link to city website. Is there a way that we can link our website to the city's website where people fill out the forms to be on any of the city boards?
Are you asking me?
Yeah.
Both. Well, I already, I already linked the city to our library website.
But that particular...
Well, they'd have to put that on their website.
So on our website where it says, "If you're interested in being on, on the Board of Trustees", what, where does it go? What does it say? What do we...
I don't know what does it say. I don't know.
Because you've got forms, right?
Yeah, we have forms on our website.
On the website.
If you're interested in being on board, yeah.
So my thought is if we could just link, link those together, that would be, make things easier for everybody.
It was a little hard to find it on the city website, but I found it.
Okay, she sent me the link. I can put it on ours.
Okay. Does anybody, do you think that's a good idea or bad idea?
I think that's a good idea.
Good idea.
Yeah.
Okay.
So are you wanting just a link for the form, or are you wanting, then you click that link and it takes them to the city's website?
To the form. Am I then?
That's nothing that I have to send them. You just load the form as a PDF and
Okay.
put that on your website. I can do that. Okay, just send me the form.
Thank you.
Does that all make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, then we've got the ethics. I've got myself all mixed up here now. And everybody should have that, have, have had that set to them. Probably twice now. Do y'all have it? I'm gonna walk the hook up. One of the webinars that I watched, um, highly recommended that we use this. It came straight out of the, did you not get one? I'm sorry. It came straight out of the State Handbook. Did I hand you one? Did you not get it? Okay, okay. And so I've raised it a couple of times. Has everybody had a chance to look it over? Came straight out of the State of Iowa Handbook. I just adapted it, put our name on it. But that was the only change that I made. It just made it, made it ours rather than just a generic one. Any comments? Do we wanna vote on it? No questions, no concerns, no, nothing?
Has our ethic stayed up here previously?
No, we've never had one.
Okay.
No. Like I say, I just watched that webinar. They, they really encouraged all libraries to do it.
And I think city employees have one.
They have a code of conduct. The city employees have a code of conduct. This one's specific to libraries. So what does everybody think?
Looks good to me.
Well, it kind of informs you too, when you join the board, just the ins and outs. So do you wanna vote on it? Do you need to think on it some more?
I wanna think on this.
Okay.
I wanna think on it some more.
Okay.
So we wanna table that one?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, a motion to table it?
I make a motion to table the library trustees' ethics statements. Second then.
Oh, favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay. Fourteen, new business. Couple things. Inventory. We haven't done the inventory for quite some time. And I guess my question is, do we want to do that as a Board of Trustees training, or do we want to do it, or do we want a committee to just help get that done? Uh, do an inventory at the library of all equipment and everything that we've got in the library. Um, it helps us understand whether or not, you know, we're insured properly for the library, what equipment we've got there. Maybe helps you think a little bit more about maybe what other equipment we need to replace, what, um, where we're short on equipment. It, so you know what you've got.
There's not an annual one that's...
It hasn't been done for several years.
Okay.
Who usually does the inventory? Is that something that...
It was where trustees used to do it.
Okay. I didn't know if library staff usually did it or...
Usually work in conjunction with them.
We pretty much, um, everything we have, we pretty much put in the system. So I mean, we could print out things, that's what we have.
Does it have serial numbers and all that kind of stuff?
Not serial, 'cause it just has our, our barcodes and stuff like that.
So you know how many computers you got, how many laptops you got, all that. And it's all that little stuff that you don't ever think about.
Yeah.
When you have a fire that... So, is that something we want to do together as a board, or do we want a committee to do it? Or do you not want to do it at all?
I can volunteer a couple hours at night, go over there and work on it.
So we want a committee to do it?
No, I think we should all do it. I think it'd be good for everybody.
Yeah.
Okay, so we wanna do it as a team, as, as a team to do it?
On a Saturday night maybe.
Okay. Okay, so we can, we can come up with a...
Yeah, the Saturday night about eight.
A holiday, Fourth of July?
Yeah.
Um, so we need to come up with a date that we can do that?
I wanna do it on a weekend.
Do or don't?
No.
Don't?
I would do it on a weekend. I, I, like I said, I just, I was gonna go up there a couple hours in the evening and just do it after work.
Like you could do room to room too?
Yeah.
That's what something's hoped at.
So you don't want a weekend?
We, I'm not even, I'm not even in town on, on the weekends.
Okay. So would you be comfortable if we did it on a weekend, if you cannot, even if you cannot be there?
Yeah, if you guys want to. Yeah, and I can come up and, I can do it during the week.
And I don't want to leave you out, but I think it's gonna be a problem getting people together.
No, I'd, I'd still be doing it.
Okay. Do you have a preference? A Saturday or a Sunday?
Doesn't matter. Just give me plenty of those.
Yeah, I just need notice to...
Okay, okay. I will probably send out an email with a couple of dates and everybody can...
What weekend are you leaving?
Mother's Day weekend. I'll be home.
Okay. I could do it that weekend.
What weekend is that?
Weekend of the seventh and eighth.
Of what month?
May.
Of May. Okay. We can look at that date then. And see if that'll work. Um, then new business, um, education for May. The one thought I had was rather than do another webinar, bring it a little closer to home again. And maybe you can do it from home in your own time. But if we all went in and looked at the website, it's been up and running, the new site's been up and running for a year now. And so if we all go in and take a look at it and just kind of do an evaluation of the website, what we think needs to be removed, added, changed, ideas, suggestions. Everybody look at it and come back with what you think.
Which website are you talking about?
The Public, Mitchell Public Library website. Is that something that you want to do?
Yeah.
And the state controls it.
State controls it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Put on what you can.
Okay. So I guess that's your homework for the next month.
Will that be on the...
Yeah, I think it's very easy to navigate.
Okay. Okay. So everybody's got their homework. We're back down to that overtime payroll.
Basically give me...
Tammy, Tammy, what are our options on that? We, we are in violation of our handbook, we're in violation of, so how do we address this?
You can approve to pay out the overtime that was used. You were not required to pay out that overtime because it wasn't pre-authorized. For our handbook, for the city handbook, it's supposed to be pre-authorized. As you know, I had the state auditor in here, and that was one thing he looked at. He asked me how I know certain time cards are pre-authorized or not. And I'm like, well, I know these ones, 'cause I did them myself. Library one, I went, I don't, you know, I assume it's pre-authorized, but I can't say for sure. So that's what brought this all up. For our handbook, employee, your job description, it's forty hours a week with no overtime. So if someone's working overtime and it's not approved, you legally do not have to pay it. Because that is actually usually something you would write an employee for, that they're writing, taking overtime that they didn't, didn't get pre-approved. Or you can choose to pre-approve it tonight. That's completely up to you guys. It's it's up to you.
Did the board know if the cans were at Ellen's house?
I didn't say to them.
Did the board...
And I didn't know that Ellen was turning in the hours for...
I need, I need the cans at her house, yes.
Did anyone ask if she's volunteering overtime or...
We were never told that.
We were never told. Nobody ever told us that that was happening. No.
I mean, to be completely honest, I used to approve all my department overtime because city employees are not well-paid. So I...
We're going forward now.
We didn't know. We thought all that can and model work was volunteers. Is what we thought. We had no idea that it was not. At least I didn't. You guys did. I didn't know it. Yeah.
Now, if you were requiring staff to do the cans and bottles, then you couldn't depend on paying it out.
Right.
Well, I thought the cans and bottles was like a thing that the board and the foundation held to for fundraising.
It was always volunteer. Nobody ever got paid for it.
So we need to decide.
We have to, gotta decide what you're gonna do.
I feel like, um, because even when I was very up there, they had the cans and redemptions there. If you just continue it and then think you're gonna continue down the road, maybe people stop thinking that it's an option for their cans and bottles. I mean, or, you know, if it were to start up again. I feel like you're leaning towards ending it.
Or giving it to somebody else in the community.
Somebody that's...
Somebody that can, you know, can use it and maintain it and make money.
I wonder if, um...
Right now there's cans all in all overtime.
I mean, the other option, I think I mentioned, is that you can switch it to a salary position. So then she's just pays that regardless of how many hours she works. As a department head and she's a supervisory...
But that really shouldn't be her job.
But, yeah, it just depends. I mean, I've got a couple salary employees, but that's because their hours kind of vary and, you know.
I think that's another conversation.
I mean, Christine, we usually get about five thousand dollars a year for a library can. So that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
It's a lot of money. So maybe since we talked about it in order on film tonight, maybe we'll get some volunteers to step up and help out.
Yeah.
And you're, are you, um, delivering them? They're not picking them up no more, so there's gas to be used?
That's gotta be volunteer too, I mean...
And I take them in, or I do that and...
And I take them in, or they do that in the stores, you get bags of mine.
Right.
And then I will say, if she's being paid, legally, we're supposed to reimburse her for gas, too. If she's doing this on company time, it's company dollars. So she can, she could get gas.
Well, the other question is, if she's working forty hours a week, how does she even have time to even do the other? That's where the overtime's coming, so.
So the question is, we need to answer the question. We weren't on advice of it ahead of time, so legally we don't have to. What do you want to do? You guys have to make a decision.
I'm, I'm, I think this is, um, we need to be careful because I feel like it was not agreed upon that it was voluntary. There's no statement, there's no proof of that.
There was no.
There's nothing binding, so.
Right, it was all current.
No, I mean, nobody, nobody agreed either way.
Right.
Um, we didn't know it was being paid.
I think we should err on the side of caution to avoid any disciplinary action from the state.
So, would you like to make a motion?
I make a motion to cover the cost associated with the cans for keeping them while we didn't know they were, and handling them while the board didn't know that it was on overtime.
Okay, now I meant, the cost associated.
What, the labor, the cost of?
Sorting, is that what you're saying? The cost is?
Whatever labor is associated with keeping the cans at her.
The labor.
The labor.
And not the storage. The labor. I'm, I'm asking, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, I just tried to be clear.
What do you think, Ellen? Do you, have you had to spray for bugs and clean up?
Yeah, I'm going to, because we're going bees and stuff that, you know, maybe we'll get volunteers, and maybe someone will come forward and say, hey, we got places to store them, or maybe we'll go down there in a month. Down to the co-op.
So somebody needs to put together a motion for us to vote.
I think we need to pay the overtime, and then from here on out, know that it's a volunteer thing, and it's voluntary, you won't get paid extra for it. That way, the time is covered.
Well, what about getting my house right now? Who's gonna do that if nobody shows up? If I go out there and do it, it's not very fair to me either, if I'm working all day, going home and doing that, because we've got a lot of cans. And this can be tabled for a month, I mean, who's gonna do that?
Well, I, I'll volunteer. Somebody got a garage that she can store some of this stuff in?
I just take it and get rid of it. Everybody takes their share and it's gone, you know, go turn it in.
I mean, we, it doesn't do us any good to do it or lose some money. That's the problem.
And going forward, we'll see if we're gonna continue to lose money next month. So.
Like I say, I haven't, I haven't heard what the legislature is going to do about it.
And that's the thing that we have in this year anyway, so that's.
Pardon?
That's not even, we can worry about right now anyway.
Yeah.
We, we have to deal with what we, what we have.
Let's stick to what we have right now. So. I'll get some volunteers on, on my side, I have a truck. And get rid of them. At least add for a garage.
We can just sort them and take them in from my garage for now. We're gonna take them there in June, what's that, a month? June, what, I'm sitting there for another month? I'll keep these in.
Well, if there's, there's a number of people in this room. If y'all are willing to take, put some in your garage, some in your garage, if y'all took some, if you've got some folks out there that want to put some in their garage until it's time for them to go, then they're not all in their ones' garage.
Ellen, right.
And I would be more than happy to help you out with that.
So, I'm throwing ideas out here, folks. If you don't like them, you have to tell me. Does everybody want to take their turn, pull them out of those bins and take them to their garage, and sort them out in their garage, and hold them until they're ready to go?
Are they in that?
Is that, is that what I'm hearing, or am I not understanding?
I mean, I don't have a problem doing it. I don't want to do it for months on end. But I'll do my share to get on top of the situation.
Can you bring me up to speed on the, are we using, are we utilizing that one hundred dollar rental area for the cans?
It has not been rented.
It has not been rented?
No, it has not been.
How many bags would that hold?
Ten by ten, or ten by fifteen? I don't know, ask Joan.
This space, and I don't know if I'm gonna remember this, Brad, you may remember it better than me. I told, I told him at the last meeting how much space it took out of the barn. It was like thirty-eight foot long by eight foot wide, or something like that. I remember you made a comment. It's the only reason I'm pointing my finger at you. You don't remember?
No.
I.
Matter of fact, I missed the last meeting, so.
Oh, would've been the meeting before that, yeah, you're right. We talked, I mean, it's, it would take, okay, if I look at this room right here, from that jet out through to this here, it would fill that, pretty much that entire space. From that doorway.
How long the time was, do they accumulate like that? How long would it take?
Um, month and a half.
That's a good source of info.
It is a good source of info.
Just gotta have a building.
Yeah.
And I don't mind doing it until June, if we can get the co-op, if, if people can help volunteer.
Let's just go month to month, and then try to see if we can get something figured out.
So what's the plan? Somebody tell me what the plan is.
We might have to make one, make a motion to make this simple.
That's fine.
Make sure to reimburse Ellen for her overtime work. And anything associated with keeping her garage sanitary.
I second that motion.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Make sure we get this, the can redemption on a month-to-month basis, to see if that makes sense financially.
And in the meantime, how was it done? We need a motion to say how, how it's gonna work.
Well, we're not gonna know that till we find out what the lines are gonna do, because they're helping out, too.
Okay, but in the meantime.
The meantime is right now, is if we leave here.
So in the meantime, you're still gonna pick up and put them in your garage? Is that what I'm hearing, or?
For a month, yeah.
Ellen, can you break it down by the week? How much overtime do you average on the cans?
That's a lot, I didn't even count my hours on it, because I know that's not, that's a lot. Joan knows how much it is, it's a lot of hours.
How, how many hours, Joan?
I never counted. I never got paid, I never got counted.
Can we set a maximum amount? And if it goes over that, then the board needs contacted to see if we approve or don't approve, or to see if we can come and help Ellen?
Let's see if we can help, and then eliminate the overtime hours. Get our volunteers going and eliminating.
So the situation's gonna remain the same at this point, hoping for volunteers? And if not, Ellen's still stuck with the cans.
Ellen, how many hours would you say you spend a day with cans or per week?
I don't know, like, I'd spend like three hours a few nights a week, and then on the weekends, I spend a lot of hours out there, like. Like, we picked them up, it's been windy the last few days, so, yeah, so we had to pick them up down the road, and you know what I mean?
Just volunteer wise, what would you need as far as hours for people?
If they would come, like, I had, uh, the Gemma's girls come, and I paid them out of my pocket to come help me, because there's just so many. They took us, three of us, actually, it's four of us to help, probably four hours to do twenty-two bags, I think, or twenty-five bags. Because then you've got bottles, too, they have to separate, and, yeah. And that was four people.
And that's taken them to the grocery store.
No, that's just bagging them.
That's just bagging them?
Mm-hmm. Sorting the bottles out. That was just one day.
So what's the motion, what's the plan? I, we gotta put it in writing.
I don't know, we don't, it takes.
I'll forget the word out there, I get, so, you know, contact Ellen and say, hey, I have a group, we're coming, done.
I just don't want her stuck with the cans if volunteers don't come through.
Then she needs to let us know. She needs to let us know right away.
We could make it volunteers, we could do something different. So we just.
I'll kind of talk to a couple guys, I don't know. Kind of figure something out on.
Can we put you kind of in charge of that whole thing, Jerry?
Yeah.
And communicate with us and let us know what you found out, if.
Okay.
So we can kind of keep moving forward.
If we didn't have the funds coming in from the cans, how, what would, what programs, or what would that affect, or?
When she needs something for something, she asks that we fund it, and then we approve it. I don't think we've ever denied anything that you've asked for from that funds.
I don't know if I've ever asked you for anything from funds, actually.
Yeah, we paid, um, I'd have to go back and look.
We paid Greg and Cox out of that.
No, but we, um.
Nothing that I've asked for, I don't remember anything.
You probably have a record of all that.
So the cans aren't in your own separate?
No, it's, 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 it's a line item.
Basically a reserve, so then if we need it, it's not in our actual budget.
See, it's a line item up here.
Three D money.
It, it's freebie money, but it's not part of our budget.
Right.
So it's for special expenditures for, at one time, what we wanted to do was, one of the things that we wanted to do was, um, do some work on the curb in some of the libraries, so that it would look nice for the community, and it would, you know? But then the city talked about putting new lights and stuff in, so we just kind of tabled all of that. But that was one thing that we wanted to spend some of that money on.
So how, how often is this account utilized?
It hasn't been utilized much at all, for years. We haven't had a need for it. Um, it's, the thing, the thing that's happened is, when we started with cans and bottles, I think it was a hundred dollars every month or two. When Co, it just kind of grew. When COVID hit, it exploded, because nobody could take the cans and bottles anyplace.
Oh, yeah.
And so it exploded, and that's when it got so big. So, that's kind of the history, a really short, brief history of, of it. It used to be, it didn't amount to much, it was, you know, it was here and there. But that's not the way it is anymore.
No one wants to pack them in.
No.
And then, of course, fairway, fairway doesn't recommend it at all.
So.
And so you only have IV or Walmart.
It, there didn't used to be much of a fundraiser, but it is now.
Tammy, is there any state place that we can put it here, sorry? Anne?
Yeah.
No, we, all the city sheds are full.
Yeah, we tried this a few years ago.
Fire, they're shut, they put a group on our sheds, they're, yeah, they're all the hall.
Couldn't we put a shed there at the Public Works Law?
You gonna buy a shed? That's what we thought, it's eight thousand dollars.
We have the money.
Not this budget.
I think you stopped about our DNA account and cop account.
But the best amendment already been done, you can't do any more excess spending until July first, but you can have money till July first.
But then you still have to have volunteers and people taking care of it.
Let's pay Ellen's overtime out of that budget that's already provided by the cans, until we can figure something out.
How would we do that, Tammy? Just transfer that?
It's always the library fund. There's not a lot of canned money in a separate fund. It's all in the library fund, which is where all your expenses come out.
So if we, if we go over budget on salaries this year, which we may.
No, you won't be able to, but if, if it comes close, I'll let you know, but, um, because June's coming.
Yeah.
And I already put in the budget amendment, but I usually put in a pretty good cush.
Okay.
So I, I, I don't, I don't think you're in danger of going over the budget. I mean, this one week, it was, I think, what, thirteen hours overtime? I wouldn't, if you're gonna do thirteen hours overtime every week, then yeah, you're gonna hit your maximum, because that also affects how much goes into her benefit line, her retirement. That's another nineteen percent on there, so that affects that budget, too. But I wouldn't foresee that happening.
Let's wait and see about the co-op.
Okay.
The volunteers. And see where we're panning out each month, and then maybe see if we're still making money, too. So we'll just, unlikely we won't, yeah.
Well, hold on, we're, so, she's gonna be paid for her overtime, but she still has the problem, and, I mean, the cans are, I wouldn't want those cans in my garage. You know, I mean, what, what's gonna, we just hope for volunteers?
Hope for volunteers.
And what if there's not volunteers?
Then she needs to let us know right away. If no one's contacting her to come get a load, she needs to contact the board right away. And hopefully by Saturday, her garage is empty. I mean, I've worked with Joan, so I know it's all doable. Out at the barn, like she had of everything out there. It's a job, but if you get the more volunteers, easier it is. So we've approved the overtime. If volunteers don't come, you'll let us know. What else?
We need to have a trustee meeting to try to address the issue. At, at, at least weekly, to try to, okay, bugs and whatnot.
So you want the board of trustees to meet weekly?
To see how the process is going.
It's just gonna be an email at the.
Yeah.
If the decisions are to be made, we have to meet.
We can't meet by text or email, that's meeting.
If, if, how do you prove? If any decisions have to be made that we have to vote on, we have to meet. We can't text and email.
Yeah.
So she'll set up an agenda, and then we'll be.
Okay.
Just like we did tonight.
Okay.
If you're talking month or weekly, remember this room's not available on the Monday night.
That's all right.
We could always be at the school.
You could use it for your, you know, see them electronic.
Okay. Um, so we got that figured out?
Yeah.
Yeah, please work in the right direction, get it taken care of.
Okay, then I think we go down to, um, director's comments. Trustee comments.
I have just one. It's for Ellen. If you could, under evaluation, maybe give more examples? That would be good.
Um, then we have reminders. Foundation meeting is May nineteenth at seven o'clock. And our next board of trustees meeting, regular trustees meeting, is on Tuesday, May thirty-first, because the Monday is a holiday. With that, can I entertain a adjournment?
I give motion to adjourn. My second it.
At seven thirty-seven, thank you.